Good afternoon and welcome to the... Is it working? There we are. That's the noise I was listening for. Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting of August 13th, 2018. Let us all stand for a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those in opposition. The applicant may then make a short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether you're in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Yes, we do ask the individuals giving testimony to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and to sign in on the pink sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one and two.
I'll intitate a motion on the consent agenda?
This is just for people to come forward and speak if they wish.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got that wrong, yes. Would anyone like to speak on these items on our consent agenda? Okay?
All right, if not, we can vote on item 2A, which was introduced by Gaylor Baird.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird and a second by Councilman Eskridge. Any discussion of item 2A? Seeing none, would you call a roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items 4A and B together. They're the application of Canopy Street Market for a Class C liquor license at 140 South Canopy Street and the related manager application of Douglas Larkins.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Would you raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your names and addresses.
Jill Moline, J.I.L.L.M.O.L.I.N.E. My address is 440 West 11th Street. That's Imperial, Nebraska, 69033.
Doug Larkins, D.O.U.G.L.A.R.K.I.N.S., 3902 South 76th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, applying for the manager of the liquor license at Canopy Street Market.
Doug, since you started, tell us a little bit more about the license and your manager application. Why, when, where, all those good things?
Trying to bring a grocery store downtown Lincoln, make it as much of a full-service stop as possible. And so, we wanted to make sure we offered some beer, some wine, some spirits. It's going to be a very small set, so it's not going to be a liquor store by any means. It's just more of a convenience item for the people that live downtown, so.
Thank you. And Ms. Moline?
We're in partnership with Whitehead Oil and the Canopy Street Market is at 140 South Canopy Street. It'll be our new grocery store and for the same reason, make it a full-service grocery experience.
Are there other questions from the council? Councilman Eskridge?
Yes, thank you. Excited. Really excited. We've been wanting this for a long time. So, Ms. Moline, tell us a little bit more. You have other groceries in other places, so what's this one going to be like?
This one, we're going to try to keep the same footprint as we have in our other communities, which are...I'm from communities that are anywhere from 2,000 to 3,000. And the store footprint is basically the same size that we have in our other communities. But we're offering full-scale grocery service. We will have a meat cutter. We think we just hired one today. A fresh produce department, a deli that will be making items fresh. Everything hopefully that you'll find in a grocery store, maybe not all the selection, but it will be there. It'll be at grocery store pricing. We have a great relationship with Whitehead Oil because I don't sell alcohol at my other stores and besides being a good local contact here, they're helping with all the rules regulations with that.
Very good. Welcome.
Are there other questions?
Just a comment. Thanks for coming all the way from Imperial.
Sure. Been doing it every week, thanks.
Thanks. I was waiting for the good thing.
You're supposed to say it's a good thing. It's a good thing.
Okay, that's better. Is anyone in the audience who'd like to testify on this item? Thank you both.
Thanks.
Teresa, what's our next?
Next are items 4C and D. They're the application of the Copper Kettle for a Class CK liquor license at 1320 O Street and the related manager application of Madison McKenzie. Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is McKenzie Madison. My address is 631 South 11th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508. I'm here on behalf of the Copper Kettle for a new liquor license. The previous owners decided to sell and I have been managing the bar since we opened about two years ago, so we decided to purchase it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are there questions from the council? Councilwoman Gaylor Baird?
In the report, there was a record of a first offense DUI six years ago. Can you speak to that issue and how it may or may be relevant to your new role as managing the liquor license?
Yes, so I actually have been the manager on the liquor license at the Copper Kettle since October of 2017. I was very young when I got a DUI. I was 20 years old. Stupid mistake. I learned from it. I have not driven after having even one drink since. And working...after that, I began working in the service industry and I've seen a lot of people's lives been ruined by silly mistakes and I just have really learned from that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Teresa, we ready for your next item?
All right, I'll call item 4E, application of Lincoln Pub Group for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 80 feet by 65 feet at 728 Q Street on September 1st, 8th, 15th, and 29th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., October 20th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and November 10th and 17th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Good afternoon, welcome.
No oath on the S.D.L.s?
Okay. My name's Todd, T.O.D.D., Campfield, C.A.M.P.F.I.E.L.D. I live at 6240 Northwest Second Circle, apartment 245 in Lincoln, 68521. I'm the manager of the End Zone Bar and Grill down the Haymarket. Been working there for about 10 years and every year, we get our S.D.L.s to open a tailgate area in the back parking lot that we lease out from our building owner, Lincoln Haydenford Building. And when we anticipate a big crowd or good weather, we like to set up snow fencing, a couple tents, a speaker for music, and a beer tub and just have some extra space for our customers that want to stay outside when the weather's nice, but still want to be part of the bar experience we offer.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Councilman Eskridge?
Thank you. You've been doing this for how long?
I've been at the bar for about 10 years and they were doing it before I got there, so we haven't had any problems with the neighbors. I know they built some condos, five, six...it's been a while already, but neighbors love it. Half of them come over anyway, so there's...we licensed out to midnight. We usually shut down about 10:00. Midnight's just for a couple late games in case the crowds a little later, but we keep it quiet. We turn the music down after 10 o'clock anyway. Haven't had any noise complaints, any trash complaints.
Great, thank you.
Other questions from the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Teresa, our next one, please?
Next is application of Kin Cator Brewing Company for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 42 feet by 225 feet at Lincoln Station Platform at 201 North 7th Street, number 108, on September 8th and 15th from 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., September 29th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., October 20th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and November 10th and 17th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Hey, guys. Cody Schmick, C.O.D.Y.S.C.H.M.I.C.K. My address is 8720 Fremont Street here in Lincoln. And you saw me last week and this is my inexperience showing, but to put all the dates on one. The reason that the times are a little bit longer than normal is because we don't know when some of the games are going to be. Our normal hours will go till midnight on Saturday normally, but just to give us a little bit of a wiggle room for setup and cleanup.
Are there questions from the council?
Thanks, guys.
Teresa, what do we have next?
Next is item 4G, application of Lauren Marsh for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 356 feet by 230 feet at the rail yard at 350 Canopy Street, 601 R Street on September 1st from 12:00 p.m. to 12:30 a.m.
Hello. My name is Lauren Marsh, L.A.U.R.E.N.M.A.R.S.H. Do you need my address?
Yes, please.
2541 Southwest 18th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68522.
And I am Michael Barton, M.I.C.H.A.E.L.B.A.R.T.O.N. And my address is 3055 O'Shea Drive, 68516.
Thank you. Ms. Marsh, tell us a little bit about your application.
I am here today to express the need for an S.D.L. for the Huskers versus Akron game on September 1st. The rail yard has become the place to go on Husker Saturdays and as this is the triumphant return of Scott Frost to his home in the heartland, we believe we will be facing Miami-like conditions. We expect the rail yard to easily reach capacity and patrons to be stopped from entering due to the physical limitations of the rail yard itself. With crowds of this size, safety is our first concern and having the extra room will make it not only safer for the patrons, but the security personnel as well. We believe having the extra space will provide more commerce as people can easily move around and visit the businesses. Without the S.D.L., we're certain to hit a point of gridlock where too many people...there's too many people in this space and access to the business is just effectively cut off. So, this request provides for a safer, more enjoyable environment for the thousands of fans that visit the rail yard before, during, and after home games.
Thank you. Questions of this testifier? Mr. Barton, did you have something to add?
And for me, it's...I am one of the owners of Buffalo Wings and Rings on the second floor. For me, getting involved and wanting this request is simply kind of what Lauren said is there's times where our business suffers on those days because the access into the rail yard is essentially cut off. We can go to Miami, the Oregon game, obviously our two busiest games since we've opened. And there's times where our restaurant has almost been empty, which is unheard of on the rest of the games because nobody can literally get up those stairs. Nobody can because they've shut the access point. So, that's...I just wanted to again give that support of, you know, from now the only business left on the second floor unfortunately, but that's something that does affect us.
Are there other questions from the council? Other testifiers? Thank you, yeah. So, does anyone else like to testify on this item?
You can sit down, okay.
Thank you. I'd like...Councilman Eskridge, are you going to do it or you want to go?
Yeah, Tanya, or Chief?
I'd like to hear from staff city attorney's office.
Councilmembers, I was a little frustrated on Friday and today. I've been going through a number of applications, trying to put...they have a number of applications coming for football games Saturdays, trying to match those up with special event apps. There's information that's missing, applications that are missing. So, we do not have a special event application for this September 1st game, which is required to close the street down. We really need to encourage the applicants to work through the Rail Yard Association who are supposed to be managing that area to get the proper paperwork in. So, that missing application and there's a number of issues with this application and one of those is that Gate 25 and the hotel have not submitted S.D.L. applications for September 1st. So, the site plan with this application does not control the liquor from those two establishments that have a right to use the comments area. We dealt with this last year. Council denied it because it wasn't 100% participation. So, I had told the applicant, my recommendation is either that you deny this because not everybody has submitted an application, or to continue it to get the proper paperwork in, including a new diagram that would address the control of liquor from those two establishments that are not participating. The street is already closed down through a special event app to allow pedestrian traffic. This is just merely to add the liquor to the street. We will have that same issue with some other ones that they have submitted to that will be coming to council. If there's any questions, I try to answer it.
Councilwoman Raybold?
So, have you reached out to them and are they aware of some of the deficiencies in their application and how they can go get that corrected?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Councilman Eskridge?
Where do we stand on these applications? My recollection was when we first opened the rail yard that we didn't have any...didn't allow any game day events that would close off the street or allow alcohol in the street. But then I think we changed and did we allow one a year? Was that?
We don't have anything formal. This area is outside of our ordinance that prohibits S.D.L.s on city property on game days. And we have not amended that to include this area. Council has been kind of mixed as far as whether or not they're receptive to having a game day or not. We've talked about allowing one, maybe two. Most of the time, it doesn't end up working out because of problems within the mix, for example, not everybody being on board. So, I think the most we've had is one. As we progress and depending on what happens with the bridge, I don't...you know, I don't even know if we're going to be able to consider that in the future. So, we're kind of...you know, this month, we could probably handle it, although we have some concerns from the law enforcement perspective for staffing. But I am concerned that if something happens with the bridge, we won't have a good place when we add this volume, so.
And just for council's information, the deadline for them to submit their S.D.L. application to the state is next Monday.
Did you want to testify? Were you...
I'm curious what the chief had to say. So, from the Lincoln Police Department perspective, this morning, I was talking with Captain Jason Stili and the rail yard is part of his preview and area of command. And our concerns are this, in 2017, when we begin the bidding process for our officers throughout the entirety of 2018, we close off dates that are Husker football games. So, officers do not have the ability to take those days off unless they're taking it off in week-long chunks of time. And we do that intentionally because of the resources and demands on game days. We provide a large contingent of officers primarily for traffic and direction and control pre and post game. I'm certain many of you have experienced and seen those officers doing those duties. Between that time, they migrate towards Memorial Stadium where they supplement the police force for the University of Nebraska, which is also coupled with the Nebraska State Patrol and Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. An influx of 90,000 to 100,000 people in a very concentrated area is something that we have lots of concerns about and we want to be a good partner there. I concur with the previous testifiers. I do believe that there's going to be a large influx of people into the rail yard as a result of some of the momentum that has gained and the notoriety on the change in coaching staff. We want to be a partner in providing a safe venue for people to enjoy the pre-game and post-game activities. And I'm here to let you know that we have very thin and stressed resources and we have concerns whether or not if there are more people normally in a greater geographic area that we would be able to provide the necessary component of public safety to keep that safe. And that's kind of where we're at.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you both for being here. Can you tell me...I think you mentioned that there was already going to be a street closure for an event?
We, in the past, have allowed canopy to be closed for pedestrian traffic. So, every game day pedestrian traffic, we require, I believe, two off-duty officers to be on that area and we pull from them if we have to for other situations. So, that has worked out pretty good for traffic flow to keep that open for a pedestrian. But when we close down the street for liquor, that is increased fencing. It doesn't allow that same traffic through...flow. Additionally, I didn't mention this before, the way I look at these apps, we would also have to close our street. That would be open for pedestrian traffic, but would be closed for vehicle traffic. So, we would need to make sure that Public Works is okay with that. And that's the part of that special event application, that review process, that is being skipped here because we don't have that application in order to review this. And we're running against the clock to be able to get people together to do that and to make those necessary changes. We do have a special event app and an application for September 8th. I still have the same concerns for the street closures, the pedestrian traffic, and those that are taking part in it. But, you know, that has a little bit more time to work through that one versus this one.
I think that we talked about last time that that pedestrian traffic for the game is traffic...it oftentimes includes families that are moving from parking structures in order to get to the game. So, I know there was some concern you might have to reroute children, families and children.
Well, pedestrian traffic with families would either have to go through security and have their ID checked, or they would have to walk over on 7th Street and part of that sidewalk is proposed to be blocked. Or they'd have to walk down the alley between the parking garages and that...and the hotel. Those would be the two closes if they're going north or southbound to get where they're going.
Other questions from the council? Councilman Eskridge, you have a question?
Yeah. Chief, is there a...if you were to choose between a 7:00 p.m. game and a 2:30 game or maybe even an 11 o'clock game, would there be a choice that would be better for you or not?
For pre-game, definitely, we would probably choose the 11:00 a.m. game. And that allows us for...especially in these early...the early parts where there isn't nearly the concentration of people in advance of the game in one particular locale. But again, that is outside of our preview and our control and it's something that we're going to adapt to and provide the most resources that we can, trying to keep the pedestrian traffic, the car traffic, as our primary focus. I understand and I empathize with the applicants here, but it really comes down to, do we have enough resources to provide adequate safety and security for everybody that's attending there? And right now, I think that they are stressed.
One follow-up. We have met since we formed the rail yard and we've tried different methods in trying to get everybody in agreement and to participate. And we've encouraged all along to have these events on Friday night versus having them on Saturday because of these issues. And so, I would still encourage that for planning for the applicants to focus on Friday night instead of doing it on Saturday on the game days, so.
Other questions from the council? Will these two testifiers? Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience who'd like to testify on these items?
For a chance.
Would you like to go...yes, Ms. Marsh and Mr. Barton, rebuttal?
I did turn in a special event application on August 3rd. I brought it in right before they closed. They wouldn't have my application if they didn't have my special event permit. It was all delivered and dropped off the exact same time. And the only comment that I've been told was that the map needed adjusted to keep Gate 25's cups in, and I do have an updated map that should have been turned in today because by their request, we did work with Brian Kuduski, the manager of the rail yard.
I have a couple of things with traffic flow. For those of you that remember, we did this for Garth Brooks, which obviously brought a huge influx. I get it's two different things. We aren't IDing at that...those points for that purpose. So, pedestrian traffic will be able to walk through just like they did for Garth Brooks. Garth Brooks's line ended up going through the rail yard the whole way down the other side of the street, so it was lucky that we were closed for that. But that...the line to get into that was going straight through, so that will still be completely open for pedestrian traffic. We are a big proponent as with us with Buffalo Wings and Rings, we're incredibly family-friendly. The second game of...we opened up, the manager at the time tried to make it a 21 and over and we about lost it. So, we absolutely want to make sure we are family-friendly as well at those gates. That's not where we're selling alcohol. We have that process down. We've done that fairly well. And, you know, I know there's at least two police that we're paying for during those...the last two days or those days. I'll tell you, there's never just two standing there watching our entryways. More often than not, there's three to four. So, to me, that's taking that off of his payroll and putting it onto ours because we have to obviously reimburse for that. On top of, you know, whatever they can't supply, we've offered to always put as many security as we...you know, we use Fry-Frazy. So, we've offered to pay for...to as many...to a degree to supplement that as well.
Other questions of the council? I have a couple. I'm a little confused. The street will be closed and I thought that's what you were asking, to extend the liquor license to the street?
Yes.
But then you also said it would be family-friendly and family could walk through?
Exactly, which is what we did for the Garth Brooks S.D.L. We do not ID at the point of entry. We ID at the point of sale. So, we're IDing and wristbanding at the point of sale. We're not IDing at the entryway. So, I'm not quite sure. We've never done that when we've closed the street, so I don't know where that information came from, but we absolutely...it's free...we have security posted at each entryway, but they...it was free flow. So, we did the same thing with Garth Brooks where people are walking right through and walk through the other end without buying anything from us.
There was one other question. There was a mention that there were two establishments that hadn't agreed or hadn't been contacted. Have you reached out to them?
We've never done anything with the hotel. They've never signed off on any S.D.L. We've never been asked to. Gate 25, in fact, I just was on the phone with him. They have some differences as to how it's getting paid, obviously if they're not involved. I'm not sure that...obviously, they're not paying for it. His comment was, he was told by the city staff, I'm not sure if that was Tanya or by somebody else, that they can be added to it. So, his words basically, from what I understand, is that they would add themselves to it if it gets approved. But I don't...that's what he was telling me on the phone.
I understand. Are there other questions from the council?
Yeah.
Councilman Eskridge?
Again, as you heard, we've had a practice of just allowing one. Is this the one you want?
I struggle with that because here's why. When I came in for my liquor license five years ago and came in as a manager application, some of you are still sitting up there from where you were. Nobody said that to us. So, as us, as the business owners, if that was told to our landlord, which I'm not going to get into that relationship, I don't want that on TV, but I am telling you from the standpoint of...I probably said enough for it. But that's never been told to us. We've never got one, so I...whether I'm saying that or not, we've not got one. We've not got...been allowed to do it. We've not been allowed to prove we can do it. I think we've operated game days for the amount of people we have pretty effectively with very minor issues. I know we've got a few tavern violations, but that's going to happen because we're paying for two police officers to sit right outside of our, you know, our entryway and they hop the fence with a drink and I'm getting the tavern violation. they hop the fence with a drink and I'm getting the tavern violation. I'll take that, that's our responsibility. But, so we, we've never been allowed that one. And so I struggle with saying we need one or two because this first game's going to be crazy, the second game's going to be worse than that. And, and so for our business and we, for effective reasons, have sales three or five months out of the year coming from football and basketball season. And so for us, I need to make sure I can get that business when we can get it. If that answers your question, long-winded answer of, is that the one? I don't know if that's the one. I think we'd have to talk about that, but we've never, nobody's ever came and said that. There's no policy that says that. We're allowed in the rail yard to do it, to apply and to do it as many times as we would like. So I feel like we should have that right until we prove that we can't do that.
Other questions from the council? Is it appropriate of me to ask another staff question? Yes. Thank you. Tanya, would, do you mind?
Thank you. I'm interested in asking a question about the timing. It seems like there's some things missing or not submitted as their application. What, do we have time, if we gave a delay, to get those things accomplished?
We have time to possibly get the special event application to the committee. I have not, I poured through all the emails and I've asked the city clerk for a copy of the September 1st, and they did not have a copy. So if it was submitted, not sure where it's at. So we probably have time to get that to the committee, reviewed, get recommendations back or the requirements for that closure. We would not have time to add the hotel or Gate 25 to this particular application because it has to be, they're up, they have to submit their S D L 21 days in advance to the city. We'd have to advertise it and we would not have time to get it on for Monday. City clerk can tell me if I'm incorrect on that.
Right. We would have to approve it today to, in order for them to submit it next Monday.
Now, normally the hotel will sign off as we are not going to use the courtyard and so they don't get an S D L. And that is fine. And that's available for Gate 25 also, but I don't think that we'll get that from Gate 25. I think that they will plan to use their windows to sell into the commons area or the courtyard there, so.
And I have not received an updated map.
Hello, Sony Fan City Clerk's Office. I apologize. I do have the application for special event for Lauren Marsh. I had mistakenly thought it said September 18th and not seen the one ahead of it, so I do have the app.
Well, that, the loss is found on that.
So does that say?
I'm not going to fault the applicant on that. It's still, everything together. I, there were many emails that I dug through, so that's.
Councilwoman Lamb.
Yeah. So, does it say September 1, comma, 8? Is it asking for two dates or?
No, it says on the application, the way it was written, it said 1 period, September and then 8. So when I flipped it over, all I saw was September 8th and not the 1st, so that is entirely my fault.
Gotcha.
She just writes the date before the month.
Is that, but is that the supplemental form? Is that the same thing as an event form?
The supplemental form.
All part of the application.
Okay, but this is an application for S D L, they're talking about a special event application.
Right. So you have two forms. One, permission, asking permission to use the city street, and then the other one, asking for permission to temporarily expand your liquor license.
How often does the committee meet, generally speaking?
It depends on how many events that are going on. Many applicants meet with us ahead of time, and so if we do that, we can put them together and meet once a month. Sometimes we have to meet twice a month. If it's a non-liquor event, non-rail traffic issues, we can circulate that by email and make, speed up the process.
Councilwoman Christensen.
Since this is in a fairly unusual situation, could we make this happen in time?
I would need a new map showing that Gate 25.
And she has that new map with her today. There we go.
Would you need Gate 25 to sign off on that?
Not on this map. So basically, I don't know if I'll switch over.
Thank you.
Sure. Remember, I'm doing this on the fly, so there's some other issues associated with this.
That's why I think it'd be best to just, my question is, can we just take a step back from this instead of trying to solve this in this meeting? Get it resolved and get it resolved in a timely fashion? Because it's not the applicant's fault, I don't think, at least not everything.
Not everything.
Right.
Right. What I would suggest, if you think you're going to consider approving this, continue it until next Monday. Can review the last application. They can address these other issues that are missing and we can try to get the Special Events Committee together to deal with the street closures and the pedestrian and all of that. Not making any promises because that's a lot of different moving parts. Otherwise, I would say focus on the next app, which is going to come before you for the 8th of September.
Councilwoman Lamb.
Thank you. The Special Events Committee, I'm guessing that, and I expect that the law enforcement would have a huge voice in that also, they're at that table, correct?
They are.
Okay. And so the issues that the chief brought up to us would potentially result in a no anyway from the event committee or a recommendation to denial?
Well, what we, what we do is we post for football and we post for traffic direction and those need to fill first. And then these events that are happening that need extra off-duty officers come third. So it's possible, and, correct me, I'll let him talk about that.
Thank you. Chief, help us understand.
As Tanya was mentioning, we post, we prioritize the number of officers that we have. And first and foremost is traffic direction and control, and that's pregame, postgame. Those in between go to the stadium, as I mentioned. There's two other details, at least one other detail on this particular game, and that is in the Russian bottoms. And there is a large contingent that we have there in an effort to prevent.
Issues.
Issues from occurring. That has not been filled. So right prior to coming over here, I confirmed that our first 20 positions for traffic direction and control are filled. The positions for the Russian bottom detail are not filled. Of course, this would require, the two officers that's referred to have been filled. There's only so many to go around.
Mm-hmm.
I can't, I can't sit here and say they won't be or that they will be, but it's something that we have to take into consideration.
Councilwoman Raybold.
I don't know if this is a common occurrence, it doesn't sound like it is, but could the applicant actually hire private security detail to supplement? Has it been done before?
They have a large contingent of Fry-Frazy and Associates, some of which are, they're not acting as commissioned law enforcement officers, some of which are, that provide that added security. And that has always been part of the overall security of the events themselves.
The city does not allow private, only private security for liquor events. We have used Fry-Frazy to supplement those numbers, so the number of off-duty has been reduced because of having other available staff. But they have no authority to arrest at these events and they have to keep their law enforcement hat off if they're, if they are law enforcement when they're acting as Fry-Frazy. So we've, as a practice, have always required when there's liquor on a public street to require off-duty officers to protect the public and the city's, the city's interests in those areas.
One last point of consideration, and this is what we look at. There's a lot of our staff that's going to be concentrated in the downtown area and around Memorial Stadium. We still have other areas to serve in deep northeast Lincoln and deep southeast Lincoln and the outskirts of southwest. We cannot bring every single police resource that we have to the center of the city and those, and leave that unattended. So that's a consideration.
Councilwoman Christian, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Just a point of clarification, if you hold this over till next week, they won't get it submitted to the commission in time.
Ten, 10 days?
Is the 20th. It's 10 working days.
While she does the math, Councilman Christensen.
That's what I, my question was, was it going to be submitted in time to the Liquor Commission?
I just checked the calendar on the website and, or the first.
I'm counting 10th, beginning the 29th.
Councilwoman Gail L. Baird, do you need a moment?
Well, my question is about the larger concept of this type of event because I feel like there's some confusion about what's been allowed, what was intended to be allowed, and what has actually happened in practice about these.
I thought we had a football game, but it may have been one of those that didn't work out because of members. That's very possible. I know we've had closures, and like I said, we've encouraged to do Friday night instead of an actual game day.
I have two things on that. One is it's, we've done Kenny Chesney with no issues. I know the mayor and some of the councilmen, I don't know if you were there, there was a couple of city councilmen at that time that were walked through. We also did all, or the two days of Garth Brooks, again, without issues. I think if you talk to the staff that was there, and at Garth Brooks is probably what's comparable as far as the crowds that we have there to what we're asking for. When the six police officers were there, I'm sure most of them will tell you, as they told us, that it was unnecessary to have six of them there. I get why we would want to in a situation like this because we do normally have 15-ish or more of our private guys there on those game days. And the Friday nights is just not realistic. I know you want us to create these events and do that. We're doing this for two reasons, safety and then obviously for people to have access to our businesses. One of the things, signing a lease on the second floor, and I get that's already a deal, we never thought about the fact that what happens when first floor gets closed off, that's the reality of what happens is nobody can come up. First floor can still mingle through those windows, but that shuts us, but there's not enough business. There might be this year, and we'll see that with the reality of what's going on and now hotels are sold out for consecutive days and Fridays and Saturday nights. So there might be some of that business on Friday, but for us to work through trying to do things on Friday, it's not realistic for us to spend our dollars that way.
Councilman Christensen. My, I'm sorry. Okay.
I wanted to finish, just following up with city attorney staff about 100% participation. Is that required?
Well, that, the common area that are located on the private property, they have overlapping liquor licenses, and that means they get to use that, those space, that space. So when you pick up the fence and you make it one big space, they need to participate in the street closure and have an S D L or not use the commons area. And that's been the problem. So the other idea that we presented last year to kind of move some of these forward is keep the fence up, have security points to ensure that the liquor from those that are non-participating don't go out into the street. It's not ideal because you have to keep someone there all the time.
So, so given the, the fact that we, delay isn't, well, delay is a decision that would put this to rest, it would mean it couldn't happen, but you still need information. Is there a process by which we could conditionally approve this if they were to meet either the 100% participation benchmark or an agreement to fencing and staffing? And if you were contingent on you being able to, with LPD, fulfill the top priority assignments and then third, complete missing information that goes with this application if there is any missing at this point? Are those the kinds of things we, could we consider that even as an option to approve with conditions?
Can you enter the approval that way?
Sure.
You jumped right ahead of me, so that's what I was going to do.
So, can I comment on the contingency?
Yes, please, could you?
Thank you. As far as the staffing and the way that that works in practicality, I would not consider that particular part as a contingent because if you were to choose to approve it in a contingent manner, that could put them to Friday night. Oftentimes, we're filling those at the very last hour. It is a negotiation process of calling people, are you sure you really want that day off?
I don't want that job, no.
So, just don't consider that particular part as a contingency if that's what you choose to do. Make sense?
Have you had any game day Saturdays where you haven't been able to fill those priority slots? I mean, what kind of odds are we looking at, not that you can commit for certain?
Yes, there has been, but here is the point of conversation, and I don't want to speak for Chief Yardley, but if he were here, he would take the 20 that we have and 50 more. But we just cannot provide those types of resources. In fact, they've worked through trying to attempt legislative changes in order to bring other people into our community. We're going to adapt to whatever this council feels is appropriate. My purpose here is merely conveying the issues that we're struggling with, and it is, it's a balance.
The vacation reference or the days off reference, those have been things that we've had to do to fill the first two priority or the first three priority. We've had to run short on special events before, and everybody that gets a special event also knows that that is a term of their, of their permit is that we need to fill those spots. It does create personnel issues when you start calling people and begging them, right, and encouraging them to switch vacation plans and, and things that they have with their families. So it's not without headache when the department does that. It's gracious when those officers do make those changes, but it creates other issues.
This is Labor Day weekend, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Other questions from the council? Anyone else? We're done there, right? I think we need to move on to our next item. Thank you all for testifying. Teresa, let us go to our next item under public hearing, liquor.
Next is item 4H, application of Rhino Dynamics doing business as Duffy's for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 65 feet by 55 feet at the Parish Project Duffy's back lot at 1412 O Street on September 8th from 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM.
Hi, my name is Scott Hatfield, S C O T T H A T F I E L D, 1412 O Street, and thanks for seeing me. I appreciate you guys trying to navigate the liquor sales and the family-friendly zone, but good, good job so far. So this is for a concert.
You say that now.
Yeah, I mean, right? I mean, it looks like it's hard. Okay, so this is September 8th, the Colorado game, and we would like to have a show in our back lot, nothing on city property, and we've done this before, and it'll be a concert. And there will be a charity that's going to receive some, a little bit of the revenue from this, but we're not making that announcement until this weekend. So that's, that's kind of what's going on.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the council? This was an easy one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I think we're good.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Teresa, our last one here.
Our last one is application of global warming for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 120 feet by 95 feet at Innovation Campus at 2021 Transformation Drive on August 31st from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Hi there.
I'm Dan Sloan, D A N S L O A N, 405 South 28th Street with the Mill. And Tamara knows all the details today, so I'm going to let her handle this.
Tamara Sloan, T A M A R A S L O A N, 405 South 28th Street. And this is the artist reveal event for Elevate Lincoln, so they're covering the artists of the elevators out that are over the railway by Innovation Campus. So this is our first attempt in this particular space outside the Mill and the big courtyard. The property owner would love us, for us to be able to start staging some things out there. It's a perfect space for it. This is in conjunction with Spree Tail. It's really their event. I'm applying with them, so, well, not officially with them, but we'll be the ones serving alcohol at that event. They also have food, they're bringing food trucks, daffodils, and I forget who else, there's another food vendor coming in. They'll have a small band there, so, and a stage, so they'll be able to do that artist reveal on that. So it should be a fun, very nice event. They expect about 300 people, they're thinking, so.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council?
Pepe's, was that the other food truck I thought I read?
Yeah, I think it is Pepe's.
Is there anyone in the? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item?
You can sit down.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Lamb would like this.
I just want to say that I'm really excited about the elevator project.
Well, it's in Omaha, look great. I'm, I'm really excited as well.
We just hope they always find a way that they can leave them up longer because they're gonna look so cool. So it'll be fun.
Thank you. Okay, we're done with the liquor resolutions. It's time to take motions. And we usually have John help us with this, but John has left the building.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would move that we approve items four A through four F and four H and four I.
Second, you have a motion by Councilwoman Lamb and a second by Councilman Christianson. Any discussion of this motion? Seeing none, would you call the roll?
Gail L. Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Yes.
I would, I would move that we deny four G at this time and allow them the time to perhaps apply for the next game.
Second.
You have a motion by Councilwoman Lamb and a second by Councilman Eskridge. Just Councilwoman Lamb.
Sure, thank you. I am concerned, especially with law enforcement, the shortage. And I know that there have been some examples brought up of some concerts, but those concerts don't involve also something going on at Memorial Stadium and the other issues. And I'm also concerned, I believe the first game is a night game, and so this is a long day for people to be drinking. And I think that the chances of, you know, things going wrong are increased. And I'm, and law enforcement not being able to have a presence concerns me.
Councilman Christianson, then Councilman Eskridge.
This is a mess. It needs some time.
That was nice. Councilman Eskridge.
Okay. And when, when the rail yard was established, one, one of the understandings was, it's kind of like the Three Musketeers, you know, one for all and all for one. So everybody, everybody needs to know and everybody needs to, to sign on to it. There are problems when that doesn't happen, as we've heard. And this one just, it's just not ready. And if we were to delay it a week, that would in effect kill it. So I, I'm, I think this is not, not the appropriate time. It sounds like, you know, the following week may be better.
Councilwoman Raybold.
You know, I'm not going to support the denial. The reality is, this area in Lincoln has become an area where everybody wants to go before a game and sometimes even after the game. And I think not to put some of these standards in place with the fencing, to safeguard people from drinking on the street and supplementing it with private details to make sure that the crowds are safe and that people can move, I think is kind of a denying reality that is going on in our city that has become a hub and attraction for, for many. I would like to see it continued, however, to the following Monday to see if they can get some of these issues wrapped up and tied up because it seems like some of them were clearly not the fault of the applicant. And I think if they could come back with more, I guess, detail on who is going to be staffing security in addition to the limited law enforcement that might be available. I think it's in the best interest of public safety that we do move forward on, on, on this application and putting in the right safety measures in place to handle the crowds that are going to be there, no matter what.
Is that a motion?
No, I'm gonna not support, I said I will not support the denial.
Right, but you said something about delay.
I would like to see it continued, and that's, but we have a different motion right in front of us to deny it.
Just get a clarification on
Yes.
On the delay, it would allow the city to work out issues, but would prevent things from going forward at the next level, the state, or how, does that work?
Right, the deadline for them to submit their application to the state is Monday, the twentieth.
So.
So if we delay it.
Could, could they theoretically take it from here straight over there?
Yes.
They have to upload it off the state's, onto the state's website.
Are you saying where if they get it uploaded before midnight, they meet the?
It would depend, I would have to have the recommendation sheet completed and scanned before I came to the meeting. Because I'll be here all afternoon. We, it's the budget hearing, vote, and I don't know what time we'll get out. Correct.
The question, Teresa, the question for you is, would we have had all the, the additional documentation?
No.
No.
No way.
I have a slightly different question, and my, our staff attorney has left. The street is already going to be open for pedestrians. This application was just allowed them to drink in the street.
With the appropriate fencing.
Right. And the applicant who's on the second floor was having some issues with traffic. Those issues are still going to be there, but he's still going to be open. He still has the opportunity for customers. We're just, if with denial, we're denying them the ability to drink in what is currently the street.
Correct. And they're also creating an overcrowding situation in the areas where they can drink, which is likely to happen.
Was it, you said earlier, right, mess?
Yep.
Any other discussion?
This is really a hard one. I think Cindy's made excellent arguments. I can add to that, the fact that it's Labor Day weekend and that there might be a lot more people celebrating because it's a long weekend and in town. Jane makes great point about the fact that it will be exceptionally crowded, and we've heard about how the upstairs business will be affected. At the same time, we keep hearing arguments between these tenants on multiple fronts. And it's pretty frustrating from where we sit that it seems like.
Might need to be in timeout?
Folks need to figure it out, or we will just have to be forced to deny things because it, but I don't like giving one of them veto power over the rest, so. You know.
Councilwoman Raybold.
I just have a question. I mean, if we do a continuation and we let them make all good faith efforts to get this resolved in the appropriate amount of time, and should time run out on them, does it automatically kind of? Can we not give them an opportunity to try to do that?
Well, I guess that's what I was trying to ask the clerk.
I think what that does is it puts our staff into a hard place, harder than ours. How about that?
Is, I have another question for the clerk then. Is there another alternative where approving today with contingencies allows you to move forward with the paperwork and get it done in a more timely manner that doesn't put you on the spot on Monday? But should things not be worked out, it fails?
Well, like the chief said, if they can't fill the L P D positions and it's the thirtieth or thirty-first.
And it goes back to Cindy's point about security and the rest of the city.
They're done either way, and here they've already advertised for it.
So we have a motion and second?
Is it my motion?
It's your motion.
Yes, thank you.
I don't remember who seconded it.
This is for denial.
Councilwoman Lamb, second by Councilman Eskridge.
Motion for denial.
To deny. I would ask you to call the roll, please. A yes vote is a denial.
Correct.
I'm sorry, hold a moment. Councilwoman Gail L. Baird?
I have to go first. I'm just gonna explain what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna, I'm gonna support the motion to deny because I'd like to see them find a way to get to consensus on these applications. So my vote is yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Schob?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one for denial. All right. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. Item five A, accepting a report of new impending claims against the city for July sixteenth through the thirty-first.
Is there anyone here to speak? There was a young woman, Ms. Mendoza Gorham. Did she stick around? Is anyone else here to testify on pending claims against the city?
Looks like we have one.
Yes.
Come on, Tom.
Good afternoon, how you? I'm well, how are you?
Would you state your name and address, please?
Keith Holtz, Keith Holtz, sixty-four oh nine Burlington Ave.
Strohst, thanks for coming again. Tell us, you have the mic, your turn.
About the incident again?
Well, your, your claim was denied. Tell us why we should act differently than what we've been recommended by the, our staff attorney. Tell us about your claim again, yes.
Okay, I was riding on the bus, the number fifty-one on April sixteenth. And the, the bus was overcrowded. They had like sixteen people standing up, and I was one of the ones standing up. And the bus wrecked into this truck, and it snatched my shoulder and my lower back. And so I put the incident report while I was still on the bus. And I was incarcerated at the time, so I figured they would get ahold of me, but I only had like a month and a half left to go. But when I got back to the work release center, I went to the nurse there. She heard the cracking in my shoulder, so she X-rayed my shoulder. And she said, wasn't no bones broke. But she knew that it was a problem because of the popping sound, so she gave me some type of medicine, but it really didn't help. And when I told them it didn't help, they didn't really do nothing about that. So when I got out, a month and a half later, I went to, went to the doctor, and they did MRI on my shoulder, and they showed some tears. Should I pull that out again? I got my glasses. Reading glasses?
Teresa, would you hand these?
Behind you.
Appreciate it. Hard to see.
Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, move that.
Yes. The map, yeah.
This is one of the papers they gave me. Well, these are the two that, from the MRI.
Can you read that?
Yes.
Well, a little out of focus. Okay, so so after, after I did that, I tried to get ahold of the bus company, and they sent me a letter saying that they didn't feel it was their fault. Do you need to see this? Or do you want to see the original letter I wrote them?
I think we, yeah, keep going. We don't, we don't see that one just yet. Keep, keep talking.
Okay, and when they said it wasn't their fault, so that's when I wrote the letter. And once I got, once I went to the doctor and they told me something was, a tumor was in my shoulder, I, I just started working like two weeks ago, so I ain't got insurance. So I need some type of finance to get some therapy done or if I have to have the surgery. So right now, I'm kind of lost for what I'm gonna do.
Understand. Thank you. Are there questions of this testifier?
Do you want to see the other paper from the doctor?
Yes, you had it put up there for a second, that'd be. If you slide it up to where we can see the bottom. Keep going. So you were here a couple of weeks ago, and we reviewed your case and we asked for some additional information. I might ask the city attorney to come up if you would and talk about this claim, unless there, someone has questions of this testifier. I'm, Councilwoman Raybold.
Mr. Holtz, I know when you were here last time, we had some concerns if you had an opportunity to follow up with the party that they held liable for the accident. If they determined it wasn't the fault of the Startran bus, but it was the fault of another party. Did you get that contact information to reach out? Okay.
No, nobody never gave me anything.
That was my question of the city attorney. No. Just a moment, yeah, just hang on a second. I, my question was very similar to hers, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
I didn't want to step in. If he's not finished with his presentation, then I want to give him his.
Do you have anything else to add?
Well, no, not, not at the moment.
Okay, thank you. You would sit down and.
He needs his glasses back though.
Now, I keep tooth fairy.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, city attorney, as you recall, this was a matter that was before you two weeks ago. And there were a couple of questions that you had two weeks ago that I didn't have the firm answer to. One of them was what happened with the citation. And as Mr. Holtz did point out, two weeks ago, the bus driver was originally cited at the time of the accident. The, then upon further review by the city attorney's office, that citation was dismissed. In part, I think because of the further investigation, those of you who had an opportunity to review the videotape of the accident saw there was a matter of the bus following the truck in front of it, leaving a pretty good, maybe too much distance between those two vehicles. And then a pickup started pulling in front of the bus, the truck in front of the pickup slammed on its brakes. The pickup also slammed on its brakes, the bus ran into it. So the city attorney's office in reviewing the videotape and the, in the accident report, determined the bus driver was not at fault. As you might imagine, every time a Startran bus is involved in an accident, Startran also has a procedure that they follow where they review, try to determine if the driver was at fault. In their review, which was done on the sixteenth of April, they determined that the accident from the bus driver's perspective was non-preventable as well. So you had those two investigations, both concluded that the bus driver was not at fault. And that's really the basis of our recommendation to the council that you deny this claim.
Councilman Christianson?
So I've viewed it as well, both the inside the bus and the outside the bus, looking outside filmed. Pretty obvious to me that the conclusion is correct. The city bus driver was not liable. The citation was removed?
Yes.
And was there a citation issued to the truck driver?
There was not. And, and you might conclude, looking at it, that, well, that, the truck driver was at fault. I don't think it's the, the practice of the police department to, to pick up the video. If they've already issued a citation, they don't usually go back and review. And this would have been a negligent driving. In this case, I'm not sure even if they've reviewed the video that they would have said, oh, yeah, let's go out and make sure there's a traffic ticket issued. Because it is kind of a bam bam, kind of a case. But I would say, and I, this might go to, to Councilwoman Raybold's question, that if there was an injury that, that resulted, that it may be worth getting a look at the accident report and, and filing a claim with the driver of that pickup, and that is present on the accident report. And the videotape is also currently available. We could produce that if there was a subpoena.
I, I thought when, when there is an injury and harm done to an individual during an accident, that there does have to be a citation issued to the liable party.
Well, you, you have to determine who the liable party is. There was a citation issued. And it was to the bus driver in this case. It was a further investigation indicated to our city attorney's office that, that bus driver was not liable. And so that's why that citation was not filed with court. And it wasn't, it's not the responsibility of the police department or any law enforcement agency to go out after the fact and conduct further investigation to assign blame.
So does Mr. Holtz have access to the other parties through the police report?
Yes, he would.
Has that been given to Mr. Holtz?
I don't know that he's asked for it, but it's a, it's a public document that he would have access to upon request.
Is there any way we could just give him a copy?
I think if he came to the office and requested it, we'd give it to him, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of staff?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holtz, it'll be a few minutes. Teresa, we're ready for, is there any, wait a minute, does anyone else like to testify on this item, claims against the city? Then Teresa, we'll go to our next item, please.
Yes, item five B, approving the master service agreement renewal between the city and Converge One for VoIP equipment, software, and maintenance for a term to expire August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Steve Henderson with Information Services. This agenda item is a contract renewal with Converge One, who is our vendor partner for maintenance and support of our VoIP phone software. As you might guess or understand, the phone system is one of our most visible and most important services that we offer both to the city and county. So it follows from that, that we certainly want to make sure we have appropriate support and maintenance should anything go awry with that system and we need help. So this contract provides us with that renewed service for three years. It's approximately seventy-seven thousand dollars per year. I know you have a full agenda this afternoon, so I'll stop there and see if there are questions I could answer for you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to testify on this item, agenda item? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Teresa, our next item?
Next then is item five C, approving the labor contract between the city and the Lincoln Firefighters Association for a term effective August twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, through August thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Good afternoon, council. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources, presented labor contract for your consideration and approval. Said this is with Lincoln Firefighters Association, Local six forty-four. We concluded negotiations. It spans from one year in arrears of August twenty-four nineteen, excuse me, twenty seventeen through August thirty-one, twenty twenty. Some of the brief highlights of this contract. There's staffing increases, first and foremost. When new station fifteen opens, there'll be four added to the head count for a total of eighty-two. That'll happen in twenty nineteen. And when new station sixteen opens, they'll add additional four to the head count for a total of eighty-six in twenty twenty. And then in year twenty twenty-two, they'll add two more to the head count for a total of eighty-eight. Tied to this staffing increase is a limitation of vacation slots by the employees. That will be limited to nine. That will allow LFR administration to reduce overtime exposure and coverage issues. Wages for the year twenty seventeen eighteen, a two percent increase. For twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, a two percent increase. And for twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, a three percent increase. Additionally, there's been added a deferred compensation match, which will become effective January first, twenty nineteen. It adds a match of one percent of compensation for voluntary contributions. Again, both parties added very clear language that the deferred compensation is considered a part of wages in the calculation of total compensation, which is in all parties a benefit and favor in for, in front of the C I R. Those are some of the highlights of the economic issues. Additionally, the single health insurance moves from one hundred percent, one hundred percent coverage to ninety-six four. So employees will be participating at the single coverage. Be happy to address any questions I might be able to for you.
Are there questions from the council for this testifier? Councilwoman Lamb?
So as I understand it, this goes through twenty twenty, so now right away, almost right away, you're gonna start negotiating the next contract with, so that we're not in arrears when we reach twenty twenty?
I think this has been an ongoing thing. Both parties worked very hard to reach this. We won't be beginning immediately, but we'll probably in early twenty twenty. I think both parties want to, you know, stay on top of this, so we're not always negotiating in, in arrears.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the council? Is there any else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Teresa, our next item, please?
Next then is item five D, approving an interlocal agreement between the RTSD and the city to accept the transfer of RTSD funding for the Rock Island to Jamaica North Trail Connection Project.
Good afternoon, Sarah Hartzell with the Parks and Recreation Department. Here today, this is actually a renewal of an agreement that you approved last year. But just as a little refresher on this project that we're, that the city is working with the RTSD on. We have a trail called the Rock Island Trail in Lincoln. It's one of our more popular ones, kind of curves through many of our neighborhoods. And then at Denzmore Park, which is down by the South YMCA, it abruptly turns and heads off towards Fourteenth Street. However, many of our riders do not abruptly turn. Many of them continue on down an embankment along the railroad. Enough of them that it has actually worn a pretty solid path down to active railroad lines. This is a double railroad line that's actually pretty busy. The, the users of our Jamaica North Trail use this, well, and also Wilderness Park, use this to kind of cut through and, and give themselves a little shortcut down there. And to them, I can see how it might seem safer than some of the other options, which include Old Cheney roadway, where there's the sidewalk ends before you get to the Jamaica and you have to merge up with the, the vehicles to get over to the Jamaica North Trail. And then Fourteenth Street, where there is no sidewalk adjacent to the, the rail line and they have to walk along the edge of a road that doesn't actually have a shoulder. But it's not a safe situation and, and it needs to be addressed. The RTSD has generously and, and wisely agreed to cooperate with this project and to provide a good deal of funding to construct a pedestrian and bicycle bridge that would go over the top of these rail lines. Down on this end would be Denzmore Park. Here is the connection then to the, the Jamaica North into Wilderness Park. And it would keep people safe, get them up away from those rail lines, and also provide a really great connection for our trail network to get those south neighborhoods connected over to the Jamaica North, which is really the highway into downtown, into, into the university campus. So this agreement will run for one year and it allows the RTSD to transfer funding that they have budgeted for this project. The RTSD board will still be hearing this and Roger Feigard is here to kind of tell you about that process.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Roger Feigard, representing the RTSD. We're kind of out of sync timing-wise typically when the RTSD, which is a great supporter and an entity to, to help with these safety issues between trains, cars, bicycles, and our pedestrians. Typically, as the funder, the RTSD routinely acts on these interlocal agreements and then they come to the city council or to the county board subsequent to that. In this particular case, we're kind of caught in those fiscal years that don't line up. And each year, the RTSD's fiscal year ended June thirty. And so that expired the interlocal agreement that was in place for last year. So the Parks Department has moved forward, getting council approval. The RTSD board meeting is September eleventh. At their June fourth meeting, they approved a budget item of four hundred plus two hundred because of carryover, a six hundred thousand dollar item. And I don't have any reason to believe that the board won't be supportive of approving this interlocal agreement on the eleventh. By taking this process, then the RTSD can issue an invoice for close to two hundred thousand dollars for the engineering that's been contracted to this point. And then on up to another four hundred thousand for any additional work that gets done before June of next year. So very supportive of the project. And certainly, there are three board members from the RTSD sitting here today would answer any questions. I don't have any reason to believe it wouldn't be approved.
And I think Mr. Christensen's up?
So basically, we've approved all this already once. And this is being, having to do it again because of that mismatch in the fiscal year between, of the RTSD and the city.
And the fact that the RTSD must rebudget unspent money every year. We use an annual interlocal as the board's authorization to transfer or expend those budgeted funds.
So essentially, there's nothing new we're seeing here.
No. Continuation of an important project in the community.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. I have, my question is more just focused on the funding because it mentions C I P funding and private donations. Correct. Can you tell me where it is in the C I P and then how much is anticipated, city versus private donations?
Sure. It shows up in the C I P in the Parks Department section in year two of the proposed C I P. When we come to the point where we're constructing, which will probably start next year, we'll have to do a contract that covers two years then. And we'll have to bring that to the city council because we're gonna be obligating funds that, that are in a future budget. But that's the, that's the plan right now, is the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars sits in that second year of the proposed budget. And then the remainder is, is private financing, private funding donations. And we've had a remarkable level of support for this project. Last I heard, the fundraiser for Great Plains Trails Network was up to about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that he had raised from just a few donors, so a few large donors. And they, they are starting a campaign for smaller donors as well. This is, this is a project that, this is my favorite Elaine Hammer story. The project that Elaine Hammer, very cutely and with giggles, refers to as a sexy project. So she thinks there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of public support out there for this project.
So I'm sorry.
Sure.
It says five hundred thousand and you're saying three fifty from the city. And then another two fifty from private donations. And so that is like six hundred thousand.
Right, right. And, and the fundraising would continue, the C I P dollars. Well, first of all, the, the estimate that we have for the total cost of the project is a pretty preliminary estimate. We're just getting started on engineering now and that will give us a much better idea of what that construction cost will be. We think somewhere between one point one and one point three million, but we're not positive yet. So the, the private fundraising is, raising is ongoing. You know, if we, if we end up overraising, then I guess that's not a bad thing. We'll, we'll hopefully have some use for those dollars, but.
Do you have the project number in the C I P? Do you know that?
I don't. I'm sorry. I can get it to you, Cindy. You have it? Oh, great.
Someone with a book?
This was all, old, this is all old news, by the way, because we did this all last year.
It is zero seven zero nine.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Other questions of these testifiers? Thank you very much. Is anyone else in the audience that'd like to testify on this agenda item? Thank you. Let's move to our next item.
All right, next is item five E, authorizing the Parks and Recreation Department's application to the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission's recreational trails program for financial aid to replace the Wilderness Park South Bridge over Salt Creek, approximately one half mile north of Saltillo Road.
Sarah Hartzell, Parks and Rec, thank you. I hate to sound like a broken record, but we're bringing this one back to you this year as well. The trail in Wilderness Park in the southern portion of the park, it's about a little over half a mile north of Saltillo Road. The creek really meanders through this area. And because of the meanders, the, the trails south of here and north of here can't connect without any kind of a bridge across there. You can't get over to the Jamaica Trail without going out onto Saltillo Road, which we all know is not a desirable situation. There was a bridge here historically. There actually was a bridge for many years there that got old and needed to be replaced. It was replaced in two thousand nine. However, there were some structural issues with that bridge and it collapsed. It was removed. All trace of the bridge is gone now. There was a settlement and we received some fundings from, some funds from that settlement specifically for the replacement of this bridge. We're working with the recreational trails program to try to get this, this replacement completed. This is our third application with this, so third time's a charm, I hope. We have done some preliminary work because the, the trails community was so adamant about getting this trail project completed. We chose to do our preliminary engineering ahead of this application. So we're going into this application having already invested some dollars, both public and private, into the preliminary engineering for this bridge. And we're looking now for a fifty fifty match on the construction of the bridge. We have quite a bit of public support. Many of you probably know Rosina Peolini. She started, actually after this collapse, she started an organization called Run for the Bridges and has been raising funds for this bridge. Last year was her, one of her biggest years, I believe, and she got nearly ten thousand dollars. So the Run for the Bridges is contributing thirty-two thousand five hundred. Wilderness, or sorry, the, the Great Plains Trails Network is contributing seventeen thousand five hundred. The remainder will come from settlement funds and I think about forty-five thousand dollars of Keno funds for repair and replacement.
Questions from the council? When? I, Ms. Hartzell?
Yes, sir.
When? If this passes, when would?
When.
Yes.
Well, what we are hoping is that we would be done constructing by next fall, by the end of this, of the construction season next year. So the plan, they, they hold a kind of a interview of the applicants in November. Generally tell us right after that if we've gotten the, the grant or not. Still has to go through some federal process, so it's February before we actually get the dollars. By then, our engineering should be complete. We should be shovel-ready to go and start construction as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions from the council? Would anyone else in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? Thank you. And Teresa, I think we have one more?
Next then is item five F, approving an agreement between the city and Lincoln Public Schools to extend an interlocal agreement whereby property annexed by the city, which is currently subject to bonded indebtedness by its current school district, will be exempt from levy for bonded indebtedness of LPS, which exists at the time of annexation.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, city attorney. We're here with this resolution asking you to extend a interlocal agreement with LPS that's been in existence for the last twenty years. And as you know, under state law, when the city of Lincoln expands, LPS expands. We have the exact same boundaries. When that happens, what we're doing then is taking in property, or LPS is, from other school districts. Under state law, when they, when we do that, say, for example, there's an annexation that includes some Waverly school property. And you're a property owner in the Waverly district, you're of course responsible for the bonded indebtedness to Waverly that existed at the time, but you become part of LPS. Under state law, you would also be responsible for LPS's existing bonded indebtedness, as well as any bonded indebtedness that's voted on and assumed after you become part of LPS. The purpose of this agreement is to address the basic unfairness of that state law. And so what this does is if you're in Waverly, you're annexed by the city, you become part of LPS, you would still owe the money to Waverly because you had an opportunity to vote on that. You would still owe to LPS any bonded indebtedness that's adopted after you become part of LPS because you had a chance to vote on that. But under this interlocal agreement, you wouldn't be forced to pay off the bonds that currently exist at the time of the annexation. And so this is, was negotiated between LPS and the city of Lincoln about twenty years ago. It's worked well in addressing a basic unfairness I think a lot of people would see that exists in a current state law. The Board of Education for LPS has already adopted this interlocal agreement for the next ten years. There were no changes that were made other than to extend it for another ten years.
Thank you. Mr. Carey?
David Carey with the Planning Department. I'm here mainly to speak to the value of this agreement. As you all recall, we had a recent annexation package come through. Clearly, one of the issues was the school districts. This agreement allows for the annexation process to be, to be much more fair and much more straightforward for areas that are being annexed that are currently outside of the LPS district, which we had a few this last time around. It is something that we certainly, from the planning perspective, feel like this is the right way to have agreement set up between the school district and the city.
Thank you. Are there questions of these testifiers? Anyone on the council, is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this agenda item? Thank you, gentlemen. Now, Teresa, our last one.
Last, we have item five G, ordering alley repaving district number fifty-two to be constructed from sixteenth to seventeenth street between E and F streets.
Okay, this is a resolution to build a district. I'm sorry, I'm Susie Phil of Engineering Services. A reminder on how special assessment districts work. Utilities such as water and sewer can be created and constructed through one ordinance. But paving projects are created with an ordinance. But before they become effective, we have to have formalized, notarized petitions representing more than fifty percent of those that will be involved. The original request for this alley was received in twenty sixteen and we've held two neighborhood meetings before creating the district, which was created this May with ordinance two zero six six four. And as you can tell, the group quickly gathered the needed formal petitions. The project involves nine properties and we have an estimated cost of eighty-five thousand for the project. The estimated cost per frontage foot would be a hundred and forty-two dollars. And they would have the standard option of paying the assessment in a lump sum or using the twenty-year payment schedule. This project does have several apartment complexes that utilize the alley. So if approved, extra planning would be required. extra planning would be required to handle parking, such as construction occurring when legislature and school are not in session, and perhaps working with the neighboring school and church uses their parking lots. But these decisions would have to be made during the design phase. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilman Eskridge?
Yes. So, sometimes these are hard.
Sometimes these are hard.
In this case, you said there are nine property owners, and what's the percentage of participation?
So far, we have 58% have signed frontage foot, so we are over our 50%.
Great, thank you.
Other questions from the council? I know one of the individuals that lives in this alley, and he's very excited.
Good.
Yes. Thank you. Is anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Seeing no one coming forward, Teresa, I think we're ready to vote on these resolutions?
Yes, we are. 5A, report of claims against the city introduced by Eskridge?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Eskridge and a second one by Councilman Christensen. Christensen, again. Do you have any discussion? Mr. Christensen?
I'm going to support this, but I would hope that the city attorney would, or have somebody in his office talk to Mr. Holtz about what his options might be going forward.
Councilman Lynn?
Yeah, so we did have some questions when we reviewed Mr. Holtz's claim before, and I appreciate city law giving us information about the ticket, which I was, the citation which I was interested in, and then being able to view not one, but three separate camera angles on the accident and what was happening inside the bus. So I'm going to support the resolution, but I too am hoping that city law will get to him the information about the responsible party.
Other comments from the council? We have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next is item 5B.
Teresa, would you hold for just a second? Mr. Holtz, if you would speak with the city attorney sometime today or tomorrow, we can tell you your additional options.
I have a question. Who paid for the people that went to the Amalas? He was supposed to answer that question. Who got stuck with that meeting?
I do not know the answer to that. That's really something we wouldn't take up here. Hopefully, we can get you the answer to that after the meeting or tomorrow. Thank you, appreciate that. We're going to move on with our agenda now, though.
All right. Item 5B is the master service agreement with Converge One for VoIP equipment, software, and maintenance, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Eskridge and a second by Councilwoman Raybold. Does any discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next is item 5C, the labor contract for Lincoln firefighters, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Eskridge and a second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 5D is the inter-local agreement with RTSD, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Eskridge and a second by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 5E is the Parks and Rec's application to the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Eskridge and a second by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 5F is the agreement with LPS, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Eskridge and a second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion? Teresa, please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
And our final.
Ordering alley repaving District 52 to be constructed, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Eskridge, second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion?
This is a good thing.
Call the roll, please.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next, our public hearing ordinance's second reading. Item 6A, amending Section 8.32.150 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to increase the occupation tax on refuse haulers from $11 per ton to $11.55 per ton effective January 1, 2019, and from $11.55 per ton to $12.15 per ton effective January 1, 2020.
Welcome.
Well, good afternoon. Councilmembers, my name is Donna Garden, and I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works and Utilities. And with me today is Scott Holmes from Lincoln Lancaster County Health. We're here today to discuss waste hauler occupation tax. But before I get into that, I'd like to review a little bit about how our solid waste operations are funded, and talk to you a little bit about how those programs are funded, how we fund operations and maintenance and capital improvement, and see how this actually fits into the entire process. First of all, our funding source, sources and uses, we have two basic pots of money, so to speak. We have landfill fee, which is restricted to solely cover the cost of operation and capital improvements at Bluff Road landfill. And we have a hearing on that coming up next Monday. That landfill fee does not go to the cost of any other programs. It's strictly restricted to the operations of that particular landfill. We have another source of funding through occupation taxes and our other fees at the landfill, and that's restricted to cost, to pay for the cost of all the other programs associated with that. And occupation tax covers all these programs, and let me show you what that involves. Occupation tax is used for a lot of things. It's not just recycling, which is what a lot of people think it is. It's used for our composting operations. It's used for our transfer station at 48th Street landfill. It's used for construction and demolition landfill operations. And of course, it is used for our recycling program. And more than that, health department programs include special waste permitting, nuisance complaints, pollution prevention efforts, household hazardous waste program, emergency response, hauler licensing and enforcement. There's a lot of things there. I don't know, Scott, if you'd like to elaborate on any of those in any way?
Well, the main one we're going to talk about a little bit later is the household hazardous waste collection effort.
It also funds the capital improvement program for those programs, and there are some, there's quite a few. We have compost site improvements, recycling drop-off site improvements, household hazardous waste collection facility, waste transfer studies, final cover for our 48th Street landfill, air emission testing at 48th Street landfill, permitted activities at 48th Street landfill, and the care and maintenance of that older landfill that existed there. So we're asking with this ordinance for a 5% increase in the occupation tax to fund those programs. That's approximately $1.10 per household per year. It's a very small amount. And actually, I'm very proud to say we finally kind of got those numbers down under control. We've had some fairly large increases in the past. I think this is one of the smaller ones we've requested. We are trying to keep all rates that we're asking for this year to a 5% level, and that's what this occupation tax increase is. Since 1978, we've got data, including, I mean, occupation tax hasn't been around that long. It's only been around, it's much less than that. But again, if that average of 5% seems to meet all of our needs from operations, maintenance, and capital improvement. And I want to talk about big successes. Our new household hazardous waste facilities is out there, and it's existing, and it's in operation, and we want to talk about how this occupation tax could impact it if we don't receive our 5% increase. It would certainly limit the availability and time that people could come to our new household hazardous waste facility, and it may impact how much we can actually ship off and dispose of. And I'd like Scott to elaborate on that a little bit.
Sure. So a few years ago, the city and county entered into a solid waste management planning effort that took about a year to complete. There were goals set in that. There was a lot of effort to gather information from our community. There's significant support to build a facility that would allow year-round access to hazardous waste disposal. Most of you know that we've done "mobile collections," as they're called, for over 30 years in our community. But those are typically only run in the spring and fall because winter's too cold and the middle of the summer's just too hot. So the facility was a joint project. There was grant funding from the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality to the tune of almost $430,000. There's funding from the Nebraska Environmental Trust of about $400,000, and then the city itself, of course, put in a similar amount. This facility is now fully operational. We're operating twice a month, and as we move forward here, the goal is to get more of this waste out of people's homes so that hazardous waste is not sitting around, can affect children, pets, older adults, et cetera. And that's the goal of the, of the facility, having the facility. We also try to work to educate the public about choosing less toxic options so that we don't get so much waste that comes through the facility. How to operate it, we need some additional money, obviously. It's a brand-new facility. It takes money to operate, and it takes staff to operate.
And obviously, the other big success we've had is in our cardboard recycling, recycling program in Lincoln. We've had over 100% increase in the amount of cardboard that we've received from our drop-off sites. It's been a magnificent success, and we want to thank everybody in Lincoln for participating in this program to divert that material from our landfill. We feel like we've done some very good planning in the past to meet the needs of our current capacity out there, meaning we're keeping up with it in our drop-off sites, but we do have some moments when we don't, always, and we know that that need is growing. We've had new sites requested by a number of groups, including business groups in town, that would like to see a business drop-off site out there as well. But we don't, don't have additional money. This would, this additional occupation tax increase would fund any kind of change in our recycling drop-off site program, meaning we could buy more bins, we could have additional sites, things like that, put them in the new growth areas that we're talking about in Lincoln coming up. And I think the other piece of this is, in the past, we funded a lot of this, additional bins, things of that nature, capital improvements in our drop-off program, with the grants that we received from DEQ. Between Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and us at Solid Waste here at the city, we've lost approximately $400,000 in grants to do the cut in the state budget. So it's no longer available to us, and we know that that won't be there in the future. So we're asking for this modest increase in occupation tax in order to help us out with those programs. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Councilman Christensen?
So you said from 1978 to present, we have averaged about 5%?
If you look at all of the different increases and actually the times that we've had zero increases, we've had to compensate for that.
So it's averaged, it's averaged 5%?
Yeah.
And so inflation during that time averaged 3.4%?
Mm-hmm. The construction inflation.
And so what's, it's all construction inflation?
It's not all construction inflation, I'm sure. Our programs have also grown.
But so has the city, and so has the revenues coming in because of the growth.
True. Mm-hmm. But it doesn't compensate for all of the entire amount that we've seen with, that costs at our operations.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Yeah, thank you. Can you tell me how much the increases were to the haulers, the occupation tax in the 1618 budget?
We had no increase in occupation tax in the 1618 budget.
Okay. So, I know that after the recycling ordinance was passed, we started seeing, people saw between $5 and $6 a month increasing, increasing their hauler rates, despite the fact that there wasn't going to be cardboard. So, and I know you mentioned the $1.10 a month per household.
It's a $1.10 per year, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
It's a $1.10 per year.
Right. But, and so that's our estimate, but that doesn't, there's, we haven't bound the haulers to charge less, a $1.10 or less a year, right?
No, and that doesn't take into account any of their additional charges that they may have. It's really strictly just the impact of the occupation tax on the household. We assume each household uses about two tons per year of material that goes to the Bluff Road landfill, and if you do the math, using the occupation tax increase, that would be the increase to them.
So that's the increase they'll pay based on what they're collecting per household? Okay, thank you.
Councilman Eskridge?
Thank you. Mr. Holmes, you said that the household hazardous waste facility is open two days a week?
No, two days a month.
Two days a month.
Sorry, if I misspoke, I apologize.
No, I didn't, so what, what are those days?
Well, we're operating on a schedule of nine to one, and it's operating on the first Wednesday and the third Saturday. So the next collection is coming up this weekend, and the last time we had our last Saturday collection, we had just about 90 people attended, so that's about what we want for coming through that facility at a time.
Great, thank you. And Donna, pleased to hear about the addition of cardboard bins and also the possibility of some other sites in areas that we're hearing from a lot of home builders in particular that generate a lot of cardboard, and that's something that's important. So that, you are looking at a site that could accommodate that?
We don't have a site at this time, but we will be looking at that as part of this next budget.
Great, thank you.
Other questions from the council? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this agenda item?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council.
Good afternoon.
My name is James Harold, H-E-R-R-O-L-D. I live at 1200 Hawkfly Road here in Lincoln. I'm speaking before you today to oppose the increase in the occupation tax on refuse haulers. Raising the tax from its current level of $11 per ton to $12.15 per ton beginning in 2020 is drastic and unwarranted. This is more than a 10% increase over those two years. And according to the fact sheet that supplemented this agenda item, that's an effect of, an effective increase of 42 cents per household per month, a few bucks a year, I know. Now, I can understand if some of you are thinking, or if there's people in the audience thinking, why is this guy up here complaining about a couple of bucks a year per household? But that is what I'm up here to talk about, and I am going to oppose another few dollars in taxes. I oppose it because it's well past time to stop raising taxes, even if it is just a few dollars in increase per household. People in Lincoln are getting nickel and dimed by taxes, and it's true, we have taxes in Lincoln that constitute a much larger burden for folks, property taxes, sales taxes, TIF and others. And these are more palpable burdens than just the refuse hauler's tax for sure. They account for thousands of dollars per household, not just a few bucks here and there. And we should talk about decreasing those larger tax burdens as well. But it's also necessary to stand up against increases in the many, many smaller taxes that we are subjected to. We have occupation taxes on everything from refuse haulers to hoteliers, from restaurants to vending machines. We have occupation taxes on pool tables. Every single one of these taxes is a cost imposed on people that live in Lincoln and people that visit our city. And even though they only cost a few cents here or there, or a few bucks here and there, when you add them up, you're imposing serious burdens on people. And before you say, yes, the taxes are going up, but we need these taxes to pay for city services like managing landfills, I want you to consider that regardless of whether that is a service that necessarily has to be provided by the city, and in the case of managing landfills, it doesn't need to be. The private sector already picks up the garbage from our homes and our businesses and they haul it to the landfills. There's no reason that the private sector can't also manage the landfills. But regardless, even if it was necessary to have the city manage the landfills, we cannot just continue to increase spending and increase taxes. We need to look at ways at reducing costs so we can reduce taxes. Are the expenses, the solid waste operations segment of Public Works being managed efficiently? Are we controlling for costs in the most effective manner? For example, this year, the budget has $172,000 located, allocated to the purchase of a new dump truck. And obviously, dump trucks are something that you're going to need around a landfill. That's understandable. But a quick online search, you can see there are brand-new, I'm talking 2018 and 2019 models of dump trucks with no miles on them for tens of thousands of dollars less in Nebraska, less than that $172,000 figure. And that's just one example of an expense that may be unwarranted, but of course, it's not the only one. Why is this so common in government? Why do we see so many examples of waste and abuse? And why are taxes always increasing and budgets ballooning far past the growth rates of our population? The answer is because that's the nature of government. Its nature is to grow. And people in government are not just looking to serve the public, they're looking to live off the public dollars in some cases. Those folks are rent seekers. Government is set up so that A and B decide that C can spend D through Z's money. And those taxes are extracted and someone else gets to decide who spends the money. And as Dr. Friedman so succinctly put, no one spends someone else's money as carefully as he spends his own. It's my position that we're not increasing taxes to keep up with growth, as some have said, but because the money isn't being spent properly in all cases. So I come to you today to urge you to reject this tax increase. And yes, it's only a few dollars more per year to each household, but that's a few dollars more. And that will be a few dollars more the year after and a few dollars more the year after that. And that's on top of the thousands of dollars each household pays in property taxes. And that's on top of the thousands of dollars.
One minute.
That's on top of the thousands of dollars that each household pays in sales taxes. And that's on top of the hundreds of dollars that each consumer pays through these occupation taxes. We are past the time to stop increasing taxes and spending in Lincoln. It's time to start rolling back the size and scope of our city's government. And a good way to show that you're all serious about being good stewards of the public money is to reject this tax increase and the many others that will come before you in the coming weeks and months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harold. Questions of this testifier? Councilwoman Lamb. Councilwoman Gaylord Bear.
Well, that was bad.
I, I want to just make sure I understand. Do you think that we should get rid of all taxes? Are you calling for the abolishment of all of these taxes?
That is not something that I am actively calling for, no.
Okay. So if there is some amount of taxes that are appropriate, do you have a suggestion for us as to what a level would be appropriate if the oc tax currently, in your opinion, is too high? Is there an amount that you think is appropriate?
A good way to start is to stop raising the taxes and get at a baseline level. Once you're there, then you can start looking at how far back you can roll them.
Other questions of the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And can we move to our next item now?
Next is item 6B, amending the pay schedules by increasing the pay range schedules for P classifications by 3% to be effective August 23, 2018.
Council Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. This ordinance sets in place the pay schedule for the next fiscal year for LPU. They had a three-year contract which you approved two years ago. This will be the last year of the contract. Every year, you need to update the pay schedules.
Questions? That was easy.
Thank you.
Does anyone in the audience like to testify on this item? Thank you. I'm going to take this moment to apologize to Councilwoman Gaylord Bear. Teresa, what's our next item?
Next is item 6C, Street and Alley Vacation 17010, application of 3AP SE LLC and Midwest Net Lease Investors SE LLC to vacate Coral Drive from the south right-of-way line of Yankee Hill Road approximately 600 feet south and to vacate Sung Crest Drive west of Coral Drive.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Krueger and I'm the manager of both those entities. And this is part of our long-range plan for the Woodlands at Yankee Hill. I have a map. I could show you where it is, but if there's no questions, I'll be glad to. We've already sent a check down to the city, so.
Other questions for this testifier? Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience like to testify on this item? Seeing no one coming forward, may we move on to 6E?
Yes, I'll call items 6D and E together. They are Street and Alley Vacation 18002, application of Roger Pearson and RKKKR LLC to vacate approximately 50 feet by 40 feet of the West B Street right-of-way, generally located southwest 17th and West B Streets, as well as the related change of zone for a change from R2 residential to R3 residential on property generally located at southwest 17th and West B.
Nate Burnett, Re-Engineering, 601 Old Chaney Road, Suite A. Both these items are in conjunction with the CUP for 13 Town Home Lots. Pull up on the screen here quick, just showing the street and alley vacation. This is on the end of West B Street. There is existing, there's existing wetlands delineated here and also a conservation easement to the east. And we're requesting that, that street be vacated so we can keep those wetlands intact.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Thank you. Does anyone in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? Thank you. And that ends our public hearing on this section.
Yes, we can move into the voting session. Item 7A, Change of Zone 18009, application of the Planning Director for multiple changes of zone, all with various waivers on properties generally located in the vicinity of the former Missouri Pacific Railroad corridor between Vine Street and North 66th Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Christensen, second by Councilwoman Eskridge. Discussion? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Item 7B, Annexation 18004, application of Southwest Folsom Development LLC to annex approximately 42.49 acres on property generally located at the southwest corner of West Old Chaney Road and West Folsom Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Christensen, second by Councilwoman Eskridge. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Item 7C, Approval of an Annexation Agreement for Southwest Village Heights First Edition, related to property generally located at the southwest corner of Old Chaney Road and South Folsom Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Christensen, second by Councilwoman Eskridge. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Then on items 7E through J, we had a request by the applicant to delay action for one week.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Christensen, second by Councilwoman Eskridge. Discussion of the delay? Would you call the roll, please?
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Then on items 7E through J, we had a request by the applicant to delay action for one week.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Christensen, second by Councilwoman Eskridge. Discussion of the delay? Would you call the roll, please?
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Our resolutions on first reading are items A through T.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
Our ordinances on first reading are items 9A and B. Our pending list dates certain are items 10A through F.
All next.
Items A, B, C, D will come off for next week for public hearing and action. And our regular pending list are items 11A through C. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time since it is an open microphone session.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Cassandra Lotman. I'm at 1225 C Street. I'm here today as a homeowner at the corner of 13th and C Streets. I'm very excited about the 13th Street project that's been funded by grant money and proposed by the city. It seems like such an easy win for my neighborhood, which is a neighborhood that could use some attention. Sorry.
This, this item's not coming up before the council, is it?
This is open mic.
Well, the question, the rule, there's a outstanding rule if it's going to be on the agenda or appear in a future agenda, you don't have to speak on it.
I don't think it's on our agenda, right?
But it's not going to be an agenda item we vote on, I don't think.
Right.
We're good.
Can I keep going?
We're, yes, we're all clear here now, so please continue.
Restore her time, too.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, I've, I've heard about the plan from the city. They've had a couple of meetings to discuss it and I think it's a great idea. My neighborhood could use some positive attention from the city and this seems like such an easy way to go about it. My neighborhood is more than a way to get downtown. It's a place full of life, where people live, kids walk to school right next door to my place. We eat delicious food at 2:00 AM from local businesses. We walk to the farmer's market. Some people attend church at a place that's deeply committed to serving the needs of this neighborhood and its residents. I ask that the city look at my neighborhood, where many of my friends live, with the same respect as some of these organizations. Councilwoman Christensen has in the past stated that he cannot imagine restricting one lane in each direction. With all due respect, I'm asking you to expand your imagination. Imagine trusting city traffic officials and engineers who have done the research and want to follow national engineering standards when they say that the proposed plan will reduce crashes and be safer for cars, bikes and pedestrians. Trust the bike commuters when we, who actually live in the neighborhood, when we say that we're already biking on 13th Street and a bike lane is only going to reduce our competition with traffic. It's okay that we still have to compete with buses. We're already doing that anyways. I'm here because the area we're talking about for the 13th Street project is my home. I love to go on walks and I'm tired of sprinting across 13th Street, no matter what hour of day it is. I want the kids who go to Everett to be able to walk to school safely and I want to have fewer lanes of traffic to cross in my car so I don't get hit. My neighborhood has long been neglected. It's a place that people live, not just traverse. And I would like the city council to continue supporting the proposed plan to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much, Ms. Lotman. See anyone else would like to speak before the city council take advantage of open mic? That sounds like a, nothing.
Hi, everyone. My name is Isabel Salas, I-S-A-B-L-E-S-A-L-A-S. I live at 665 Sumner Street. And I am here to do something very important. I'm going to turn in some postcards and I have copies here for everyone of support for the 13th Street project. And we gathered these postcards at two different neighborhood events, both at the F Street Church on 13th and F. And the way that we gathered these postcards is we just talked to people, people who live in the neighborhood, people who liked to go to the farmer's market and went to the 13th Street, 13th and F churches block party.
Thank you, Teresa, you're very.
And so I just want to show a few of these. I remember talking to this young man, I don't know how to work this thing.
It'll come up in a second, just, and.
He's worried because he's concerned about his brothers who live on 13th Street and cross the street on a daily basis. I don't remember who wrote this one, but that also shows, it says that it's sometimes hard to cross for children and others. And cars don't slow down for people to cross. It needs to be safe and easy to cross. This one's in Spanish. I do remember this woman. She's an expecting mother and she had a toddler in tow and she was with a couple of other women, also with small children. And I talked to them extensively and learned that they live on 13th and D where that stoplight used to be. And since, since that's been out and because of the traffic flow on 13th Street, it's really unsafe to cross for them. And so it says, I have, I have kids who cross the street and she thinks it's a good idea to go ahead with the project for the safety of her family. They live in the neighborhood. This is their daily lives. I just wanted to hand these in because I think you all know how hard it is to get people involved in the political process, especially people who have been systematically overlooked. I talked to, our neighborhood is very low-income and very high in diversity. I talked to many people and Cassie helped me out and I had another friend help me out about this project and what it would do to connect the neighborhood because it is a neighborhood and 13th, 13th Street just runs through it. And it is a way to get in and out of downtown, but truthfully, you have to turn off of 13th Street anyway if you're getting into downtown. There's been some rhetoric going around that I have seen today with the launch of a website that kind of is spreading some misinformation. I want the council members, I respectfully want you to, to ask you to look at the extensive study and research and analysis that our own Public Works Department has put together in support of this project. I also was a little bit disturbed by a comment that Councilwoman Christensen, Christensen made at our pre-council meeting today. He said that he looked up road diet failures, which is truthfully not a really great way to do research. I, I was a political science undergraduate and I do many research papers and one of my papers was on gender quotas in national assemblies, having gender quotas to kind of put women on a more equal level in representation. And as I started doing my research, I couldn't find the research to support that gender quotas worked. And I was really disappointed, but also I did the research and I took that into account. I want the council members to listen to the actual facts and the proposed plan and the justifications for that plan that our city has put together. It, it seems a little, it's really disappointing to see misinformation about shutting down 13th Street out there because that's not going to happen and we don't want that to happen. Both the, the people who made the revitalization plan decided that that was a bad idea because residents came forward and said, we don't want to shut down the street. I just want to emphasize that there is a large community hub on 13th Street in our neighborhood. People are just asking for a project to make it a little bit safer for their kids to go to the F Street Center, for women pushing strollers and getting their kids to the farmer's market. I talked to people who have some physical limitations and they said it was hard for them to cross because of their age, because they had an injury. I don't understand why this issue was complicated because it was ready to go and it is grant-funded. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier?
Turn these in to you, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak before the council?
Good afternoon, early evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. My name is Chelsea Pounds, C-H-E-L-S-E-Y-P-O-U-N-D-S. And I reside at 643 South 11th Street, Apartment 2, just off of 11th and H. I have to apologize, I think we may be throwing some council members off today for our blaring support of the 13th Street project, but I think I would also like to remember everyone that while everyone in here is an expert, we are experts of this immediate neighborhood that is bordering on 13th Street and on 13th Street, as we've heard. I would like to reiterate that there is a huge support for this because there are so many neighborhood members that use this as a path around their neighborhood and not as a path through the neighborhood. I commute daily from 18th and Van Dorn to 11th and H, whether it be by car or bike or bus. I take the Star Shuttle quite often through 11th Street that goes up past 13th Street. And I do also take the 13th Street bus that goes south and back north on 13th Street. So I'll be that one person that mentions that if there is public transportation we use along it. And I would like to give my support because I, I'm worried because of the dangers we have with 13th Street. I may have not been hit on 13th Street a couple of years back in 2015, but on 8th and And that's one of the things that I see every day that I drive north on 13th, going to H, is that when I stop to turn left on H, I met with a lot of impatience often in the mornings when we're trying to get to work. And it's difficult when you're in the center lanes turning left because there is no turn lane. And, you know, we could argue back and forth about road diets, and if we want two lanes or four lanes or three lanes, but I do think that implementing a middle lane for turning is vitally important to driver safety as well as pedestrian safety, because I do think, you know, as someone who also walks and crosses 13th Street, that having four lanes to try to cross is quite the challenge sometimes. And I've waited quite long in the sun and the snow and rain to try and cross because some cars will then pull out when you get that chance to run across. And I think you've probably heard it called "frogger" before. And so I wanted to reiterate that, and as well that I think, you know, with the bike share that we've recently got back in April or May, too, it's a great addition to the city that I would love to see supported with further infrastructure for that. I know in July, we had 11,000 miles biked with the Bike Share Program. I don't have a number on bicyclists through the city, but while you may not see them on your commute, know that there are other commute times as well, and plenty of bikers in the city would love to have this addition because we are lacking a thorough bike lane system that goes north to south in this area. And so furthermore, I think, you know, the improvement of infrastructure for biking slims it down a bit. We've seen the studies and the research that supports bike infrastructure and safety and crash points and cutting paths. But I would also add that Nebraska ranked as 50th for friendly states for bicycling last year, which is overall for the state, but for Lincoln, too, I think having, well, living on 11th Street, 11th and H. I don't bike down 11th Street. The drive-in parking and the back-out parking was a great idea, but I think it was just an idea that wanted to put in more parking and maybe not efficient safety for bicyclists. And so I don't unfortunately use that while it's right next to my house. I tend to take N Street down to the Haymarket because there's less traffic. But I would say on that note that traffic on 13th Street is not as everyone is concerned about. I've taken anywhere from 9th to 17th Street on my commute every day, and I take 10th Street nowadays. 13th Street just has too many points of immediate rapid stoppages when people are turning left, because we don't have that bike lane or that turning lane. And when you're turning right, it's a different story because you're free to turn right. And so I would say that my daily commute is met with 10th Street quite often when I'm driving, because that infrastructure on 10th Street and 9th Street is just there for the commute. 13th Street cuts off and turns east at K when you're driving north. Therefore, I really don't consider this a vital street to commute between north and south. There's plenty of other options, 16th, 17th, 9th, and 10th being those options. And so I think this would be a great opportunity to redirect that traffic into the infrastructure that we have to support that automobile weight on the roads. So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Ms. Pounds, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good afternoon or evening. My name is Misha Coleman. That's M-I-S-H-A-C-O-L-E-M-A-N. I reside at 1026 South 14th Street. That's 14th Street between D and E. I work downtown. I'm a software developer at 13th and N, so this project is pretty relevant to my commute, up 14th, down 13th, every day. So I am here to support that project. This will make my commute, in particular, home, a lot safer. 13th Street, I ride my bike on it, and it's at 5:00, can be a, an exciting time. So I would love to see a middle turn lane and some bike lanes. I think that would help a lot, whether on a bike, on foot, or in a car. If someone said "frogger," that's about right. Getting across that street with four lanes of traffic going, I think the speed limit is 35, is a task, and just read across pretty much every day. So, yeah, I hope you can support this plan. It's grant-funded. The Public Works Department has got anything to say about it, and I hope it'll move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Any questions for this testifier? Would anyone else like to speak before the council? There's a microphone on the other side, yes. And go.
Hello. My name is Joshua Beeman. Joshua is fairly easy to spell. Beeman is B-E-E-M-A-N, like the little buzzy thing, then the man. I reside at, over by Everett Elementary, between 12th and 13th. So I am, and I work downtown, so this 13th Street project is very near and dear to me. I either bike across or up and down 13th Street on my way to work and on my way home from work. And as the people who have been up here talking about the 13th Street project have said, it can be a, quite an exhilarating experience. It's usually going, I have to either cross it or go up and down it, and while I thankfully have not been on the unfortunate end of an accident with a, with an automobile that is much faster and much heavier than I am on my bike, I, sometimes when I'm biking up and down there, don't exactly, I just kind of feel like it is only a matter of time. So I really support the part of this project that puts in more protection for bikers, and even when I am not biking and I'm just driving up and down 13th Street, which doesn't happen quite as often, but I do have a car. I am often struck by the need for that middle lane, because my hometown, before I moved here, their middle lane roads are essentially the standard, and it's what I was used to when I was driving. So it struck me as a bit, I was surprised, I guess, that, because I was used to that safe area with which to wait to turn, especially on a street where, you know, people coming home maybe from their commute on 13th Street, there's not a whole lot of, there's a lot of waiting, basically, to turn left from either side. And it can be a little uneasy just not being sure if somebody behind you isn't paying attention. So that middle lane of the protected turning lane is something that I think is very vital for people just to be safe when they're driving, much less biking. Whereas those two protected bike lanes on the side of 13th Street would be, would help me feel safer on my way to and from work and just biking everywhere else that I bike downtown, because that's mostly how I get around. So that's really all I have to say about this, is I just urge you all to support the 13th Street project, which, like people have said, is grant-funded. So it doesn't really, it seems like a no-brainer to me, I suppose. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Would anyone else like to speak today? Seeing no one coming forward, I'd like to have a motion that we adjourn. And move adjournment.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Christensen, second by Councilwoman Lamb. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp? Is gone.
Yes.
Christensen?
He said yes.
Eskridge? Motion carried, six to zero.
We are adjourned.